Councilmember Mersch.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Proton Derringer.
Here.
Mayor Piper.
Here.
Pledge allegiance?
Sure. Okay. Place your hand over your heart and ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patients, order of the agenda. So we're going to switch the order of the agenda to put the fire department first. Yes. Okay. And then would someone like to receive and file the blue folder?
Make a motion to receive and file. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then any public comments on non-agenda items? Fred, nice to see you back. Come on up.
Nothing.
Where you been? Watching us from afar.
Yeah, Fred Visco, 15th Century Road. At the Rolling Hills City Council meeting of December 10, 2024, California Water Service Company presented information on a wildfire hardening and reliability project on Apollusa and Upper Blackwater. Included in said presentation was the comment that it would improve fire flow capacity. Cal Water indicated that said project would be completed in April of 2025. Cal Water also stated that a geotechnical report would be prepared and said report would be given to the city. At the same meeting, Cal Water advised that the placing of a portion of their water main lines above ground on Century Road and Quail Ridge Road South has been completed. This generated several comments and questions as follows. One, a tree had fallen near Three Quail Ridge Road South, which appeared to have a lot of water in the roots, and there was a question whether or not this was due to water from Cal Water infrastructure. Cal Water stated that they would look into it. Two, how does Cal Water know that there is a water main break or a water main leak above and below the above-ground water mains? Cal Water stated they had monitors which checked for low pressure, which would indicate a water main break, and monitors which checked for vibrations in the evening, which would indicate water main leaks. Three, a simple approach to determine if there were leaks in Cal Water infrastructure was presented. That is, determine the amount of water going into the water tank located north of Spur Road and determine the amount of water that was being used by the individual parcels. Four, is Cal Water planning to remove and place the old existing underground infrastructure on Century Road? A comment was made by a city council member that it was his understanding that Cal Water was planning to upgrade all its underground infrastructure and would hope that the land movement areas be placed in the highest priority. Since that meeting, a sinkhole occurred on Century Road, which was repaired. No indication from anyone on what caused it. At the Rolling Hills City Council meeting of January 13, 2025, he stated the following. The current wildfires have brought another issue which needs to be addressed. It's Cal Water's infrastructure, including without limit to tanks, reservoirs, fire hydrants, and backup energy sources for its pumps sufficient to fight a major wildfire in Rolling Hills. A letter should be addressed to Cal Water. A public hearing should be immediately held, and representatives of Cal Water should be required to attend addressing. Since that meeting, another issue has been raised. That is, the empty reservoir located at the corner of Palisverdes Drive North and Palisverdes Drive South, known as the Palisverdes Reservoir. So far, we have heard only happy talk from Cal Water that the system is ready for a wildfire, that the Palisverdes Reserve is not needed, and that in any event, they do not own it as it is owned by the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. Is my understanding that the Palisverdes Reservoir is owned by MWD? Can it store approximately 360 million gallons? And has been out of service since March 2022? Has Cal Water given a geotechnical report to the city? Has Cal Water completed the project? Has the city requested information on how much the project is? Fire flow capacity? I strongly urge the city to require Cal Water to supply complete information concerning how they are monitoring their infrastructure for breaks and leaks, including complete reports predating the start of the land movement in 2024, which sets forth said break and leak data. Address the tree issue on Quail Ridge Road South. Supply information concerning the recent sinkhole on Century Road. Present a detailed timeline for replacing their underground infrastructure on Quail Ridge Road South and Century Road. I again urge that a letter be sent to Cal Water demanding that they supply a detailed report on how their system would be able to respond to a major wildfire in Rolling Hills. I also urge a letter be sent to MWD addressing the issue of the Palisverdes Reserve and how it could be placed back in service in order to help respond to a major wildfire in Rolling Hills, such as serving as a source of water for aerial applications and/or increasing the amount of water available to Cal Water's fire hydrants. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, then we're going to close the public hearing. Consent calendar?
I would like to call 8E.
8E? Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to receive and file or approve as presented, as indicated as to the remaining items with the exception of 8E.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 8E?
On page 18, looking, I had some questions on the last paragraph where they're talking about, this is under diversion requirements, and they're talking about for Rolling Hills to meet the state's 50% recycling requirement, Cal Recycle set the maximum allowable pounds of trash per person per year at 16.7 pounds. I just questioned that. That's not very much trash.
No.
For a year, could that possibly be
Tons.
correct? I don't think that it is. I mean, I'm glad that we're meeting and, you know, we're well under what we need to be. But, and I'm assuming that that, not only do I question the, that it's per year, but they are, I'm assuming, talking about landfill trash, not green.
This is per week at my house.
I mean, ever since I read this over the weekend, every time I took something out to the trash, I kind of went like it was gonna not, you know, I knew it was going to be a land, you know, a landfill item. It wasn't a recycle. And going, you know, that weighs maybe half a pound, you know? And so I talked to Corinne about this, and I don't know if she has any more information, but she is going to go back and get clarification on that.
Yep. And just, it's really loud.
You should get from the entity, right?
Right.
Thanks for sharing, but like, we want to trust but verify, right?
So this is information that we got in collaboration with Republic Services, and a lot of their information and data comes from Cal Recycle. But I'd be more than happy to go back and get this additional information, just like Mayor Proton mentioned, you know, trust but verify. So, but, yep, this is, this is what we currently have listed under the city of Rolling Hills coming from Cal Recycle, but we'll look into it.
And then on page 20, where they're talking about the franchise work that they do, and they have trash broken down by the free residential roll-off bin. And on the three months, they show that they're showing that there's total collected and tons disposed, that there's zero green waste. I thought that the only thing we were providing a free roll-off bin was for green waste. I didn't think the free roll-off was for construction or anything other than green waste. That was my understanding. So if we can check that, because then that, if that, if that is correct, then that should be going to, that should be being recycled. And if it isn't correct, I think we need to examine that in all of our other stuff we're looking at with Republic Services. And last, but not least, I'd also ask the city manager on page 25 to get better definition on our red tag notifications. I think I understand what contaminated means. You know, for example, if you put household waste in with your green waste, or you put some building materials in with it, that would be something that I would think would be considered contaminated. But I don't understand what the parentheses REC means. I don't know if that stands for recycled. I have no idea. And then also, I don't know what COMM means. And so
Yeah.
city manager also agreed to get clarification on that.
Yep. And I reached out to Republic, and they identified that they will, these aren't structured properly for us. And it, the COMM, this is not structured accordingly for the city of Rolling Hills. Com for them is commercial, and that's why I said no, because we're not considered commercial. And for contaminated, it's from their understanding, they have documented as green waste. So I said, okay, well, the rec is kind of confusing. So they're going to come back and ensure that the next time we present this, they're going to make these adjustments.
So are they saying that rec stands for recycled?
I didn't get the clarification if it was recycled, but
To be determined.
Yeah, to be determined for the next report.
As we get, as we start to drive down on this more and more, this becomes, we need to understand the report.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So do we receive and file this, even though it needs to be redone? Or do we just move on?
We can receive and file, and when we present the next one, we'll make, we'll address these, and then moving forward, you'll see the new reports.
Is there a motion to receive and file?
I'm moved to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to 13A, new business, consideration of an ordinance number 387 designating fire hazard severity zones within the city of Rolling Hills, California, based on a map provided by California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. Sam?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Piper and City Council. Tonight, we are joined by Assistant Fire Chief Brian Kane from the Los Angeles County Fire Department, who is here to provide an overview of the updated 2025 fire hazard severity zone maps and the modeling process for the local responsibility area. Well, it is Cal Fire who is mandated by the state to identify fire, to identify and map fire hazard severity zones and not the LA County Fire Department. Assistant Chief Kane has graciously offered to share his insights this evening for the benefit of Rolling Hills residents and the city council. The map acts as foundational tools, sorry, the map acts as foundational tools for land use planning, building code enforcement, and long-term wildfire mitigation efforts. Government code sections 51177 and 51179 outlines the process to publish the maps for public comment, adopt by ordinance, and submit to the Board of Forestry. This evening, staff are requesting that the city council open the public hearing, accept public testimony, deliberate on adoption of the updated fire hazard severity maps, and introduce ordinance number 387 for its first reading. And with that, I'll pass it along to Chief Kane.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm going to do my best to decipher and explain some of the process behind Cal Fire's remapping of the very high fire severity zones. Unfortunately, I wasn't involved in this process, as it was a legislative process through the state. So I'm going to be reading a lot to you, because I wanted to make sure I used their language and their explanations for everything that went into this process. So what's happening is Cal Fire has updated their maps. We all know this already, the local responsibility area, the fire hazard severity zone maps. The state fire marshal will be releasing the updated recommended LRA maps starting in February, which has already been received by all of you in four phases. This has already happened. This is an example of what the previous map looked like as it was, and as it still is this year. However, it's going to change for the 2026 fire season. But this is as the map is for the 2025 year and previous. And this was adopted and made in 2007, and between 2007 and 2011 is when it was adopted. The new map is the 2025 proposed very high fire severity zone map here. And you can see how there was a pretty significant reduction on the peninsula in the inclusive areas of the very high zones. So I'll click back and forth here, as you can see on this map here. So there, the shaded area all in red was considered very high fire severity zone, and it has been reduced to this here now. So as it relates to Rolling Hills, it's still pretty inclusive in the very high fire severity zones. Other parts of the peninsula did perceive a reduction. It was a four-phase rollout, starting from the north to the south. The south was the last to receive these maps. And the first day that you received the maps was actually the first day that I saw the maps as well. There was no consulting or involvement with LA County Fire Department or any local fire agencies on the revise, the revisal of these maps. So this was completed in 2024. The recommended LRA and very high fire severity zone maps were to be expanded to include the high and moderate fire hazard severity zones that were not previously mapped in 2010. So what you can see on these maps is the yellow area is a lower reduction in the very high fire severity zone to a level down, which wasn't previously included. So if you look here on here, it's all very high. And if you look here, it shows the inclusive areas to where it's very high, but also a tier down as well. I would like to add, though, that the only ones that will be responsible for defensible space and inspections will be the very high. So only in red, those areas inclusive in the red, will be inspected and/or mandated to comply with anything within the defensible space. So what they did was they took a two-kilometer grid of climate data covering years from 2003 to 2018 that was used for this update. Updated model will adjust fire intensity scores based on the most extreme fire weather at a given location. Ember transport is being modeled based on local distribution of observed wind, speed, and direction values instead of using a generic buffer distance for urban areas adjacent to wildlands. So what we saw in the Palisades and the Eaton was a wind-driven fire where fire spread was dramatically driven by the throwing of the embers and the ember forecast ahead of the fire. So local cities can add or increase to these zones. So you can't reduce it any more than Cal Fire has already reduced it. But as a city, if you choose to go back to the previous map, be more inclusive or stringent in the severity zone, you have the option to apply for that. Any additions to the very high fire severity zone require substantial evidence of record to make the change. For example, fuel modifications, fire weather history, and even significant fire history, historical to the peninsula can be added to this to make a case to keep the peninsula or your respective area in the very high, high zone. And like I said before, the local agency cannot remove or decrease, but it can increase. The hazard maps are being updated to more accurately reflect the zones in California that are susceptible to wildfire. The hazard mapping process will incorporate new science and local climate data and improve fire assessment modeling in determining hazard ratings. A lot of effort and science went into this, including some AI modeling of fire behavior and, of course, fire weather. Fire hazard severity zone map evaluates hazards, not the risk. A hazard is based on the physical conditions. They create a likelihood and expected fire behavior over a 30- to 50-year period without considering mitigating measures such as home hardening, recent wildfire, or fuel reduction efforts. Risk is the potential damage a fire can do to the area under existing conditions, accounting for any modifications such as fuel reduction projects, defensible space, and ignition-resistant building construction. So how are these zones determined? Cal Fire uses the best science and data available to develop and field test a model that serves as a basis of zone assignments. The model evaluated the probability of the area burning and potential fire behavior in the area. Many factors were included, such as fire history, vegetation, flame length, blowing embers, proximity to wildland, terrain, and of course, weather. What new data will be included in the new model, and how does this differ from the previous model? So as previously stated, a two-kilometer grid of climate data covering the years 2003 to 2018 was used in this update. The previous model used stock weather inputs across the state to calculate wildland fire intensity. The updated model will adjust the fire intensity scores on the most extreme fire weather at a given location, considering temperature, humidity, and wind speed. In addition, ember transport is being modeled based on local distributions of observed wind speed and direction values instead of using a generic buffer distance for urban areas adjacent to wildlands. So what is the difference between the various fire hazard severity zones? Classification of a wildland zone is moderate, high, or very high fire hazard is based on the average hazard across the area included in the zone, which have a minimum size of 200 acres. In wildlands, hazards is a function of modeled flame length under the worst conditions and annual burn probability. Both of these factors generally increase with increasing hazard level. But there may be instances where one value is very high and the other is low, pushing the overall hazard into a more intermediate ranking. On average, both modeled flame length and burn probability increase by roughly 40% to 60% between hazard classes. Classification outside of wildland areas is based on the fire hazard of the adjacent wildland and probability of flame and embers threatening the buildings. So why does this model place an emphasis on the spread of embers? Ember-spread wildfire because they can travel long distances in the wind and ignite vegetation, roofs, attics, by getting into vents, and of course, decks. As we saw in the Eaton and the Palisades fire, we saw ember cast five miles in front of the advancing flame front. Is my property in the very high fire severity zone? So with the Cal Fire website here, you can go on, you can put your address in, and it'll pinpoint you exactly on the map. And you can even do a slide thing where it was previously to where it is now, and it'll give you exactly which zone each respective address is in all communities. What are the key elements of the fire hazard severity zone model? Two key elements, probability of an area burning and expected fire behavior under extreme fuel and weather conditions. The zones reflect areas that have similar burn probabilities and fire behavior characteristics. The factors considered in determining the hazard within wildland areas are fire history, flame length, terrain, local weather, potential fuel over a 50-year period. Outside of wildlands, the model considers factors that might lead to buildings being threatened, including terrain, weather, urban vegetation cover, blowing embers, proximity to wildland, fire history, and fire hazard in nearby wildlands. Why is my property in a different zone than the adjacent area, which looks very similar to my area? In non-wildland areas, zone edges occur based on distance to the wildland edge. Because hazard in these areas is largely determined by incoming embers from adjacent wildland, urban areas that are similar in vegetation type and housing density may have a change in fire hazard severity zone class as the distance to the wildland edge increases. Areas immediately adjacent to wildland receive the same fire hazard severity zone score as the wildland where fire originates. And the model that then produces lower scores as the distance to wildland edge increases. In wildland areas, zone edges are a result of the way zones are delineated. Specifically, zones represent areas of similar slope and fuel potential. Zone boundaries divide zones based on geographic and vegetation features that align with fire hazard potential. Although local scale, it may appear that the immediate area is similar on both sides of the edge. The class value within a zone is based on the average hazard score across the entire zone. Areas that are in the same zone but not immediately adjacent to a local area can have an influence on the final zone classification. This is part of the legislative process here. AB 211 requires local agencies to designate zone by ordinances in the zone. More of the legislative process that took place in Sacramento with Cal Fire. Here, here we have the timelines for these zones as they were disseminated to you and as they are to be adopted by your respective cities. Again, the timeline here. More information with a QR code, and of course, the compare new and old LRA fire hazard severity zone maps. So I know that's kind of a lot right there to absorb, but that's how Cal Fire did these, the remapping that they initially did in 2003. Kind of difficult to understand, but questions?
Questions?
Um. So I think, I just want to clarify, I thought I heard you mention that only the very high fire hazard zones are going to be annually inspected for the defensible space?
Yeah, inspected and enforced.
Inspected and enforced.
Yes.
So that's not going to impact us, because we're still in the very high. But if you'd been in one of the areas that
Not everybody in Rolling Hills.
Well, I, I am.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There are some areas that did fall off or are now in the lower tier.
Right.
Yeah, so so only the very high will be inspected and enforced.
Okay, so inspected and enforced. And if you are in the very high, and it's going to be inspected and enforced, I didn't see anything in here about 200 feet from structure. I only saw the 100 feet. We used to have, it was 100 feet for but you had the ability to go to 200 feet. What's it going to be now?
But it's still going to be 200 feet. So this is all of the Cal Fire information, and the 200 feet is all the LA County information.
Got it.
And then, so just to clarify also, that this current fire season will still be as it was last year. So, because these maps haven't yet been adopted. So this will actually take place next 2026. Makes sense?
Okay. And then my last question. The issue of a wildland area versus just being adjacent to a wildland area. I know we have a tendency to think that we're a wildland area, but we're really not, are we?
Yeah, it's a little bit of mincing words, right, in semantics? Because I consider it a wildland area, because you have open spaces and areas that are freely growing. Now, that, it takes into account a lot more than that. Like it's, like I said, the fuel, the vegetation, the aspect, the slopes, previous fire weather in that particular area, previous fire history, and then how often your canyons and wildland and open areas come into alignment with those Santa Ana conditions or those extreme red flag conditions.
So the issue about the however many hundreds of acres or something that they had in there, that, that's not applicable. You would consider us a wild, still a wildland area?
I would, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jim? Let's go.
No, no, I, I, I did appreciate that we had some of our areas dropped down from very high to moderate. And I was concerned about the inspection now. I'm also concerned about the homeowners having an ability to get insurance if they're in a very high versus a lower or a moderate. Is there a way that we can ask you to inspect all of our properties at the very high-risk category? Have or not actually classify that for those individual homeowners so that in case we make them unable to get insurance where they currently could, and then we stick it to them accidentally?
Yeah. So the answer would be, yes, we can inspect. The problem would become into enforcement. So if you had a said property that was
Right.
in the other areas, and that said property needed a lot of remediating efforts, there would be nothing for us to stand on to make them or push them in the direction of compliance.
Unless we, and you said that we can actually increase the severity zone if we choose. So perhaps we could see if it works without, and how it works.
Yeah, let's start. Okay, well, we'll
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So at the recent Contract Cities Association meeting that both the city manager and I attended, Chief Maroni for the LA County Fire Department was saying he was going to be strictly enforcing the zero-to-five-foot zone. But based on what you just said, that's not going to happen until 2026? Or is that happening this year?
Okay, so this is, we were talking about this. This is a difficult question. So one way to look at this is Zone Zero is still a zone within Zone One. Zone One has always been inspected and enforced. Okay? So now what they've done is they've taken a segment of Zone One and made that the zero-to-five feet. And that'll be a new area, a new zone, which is going to have new mandates on enforcement within that Zone Zero. Okay, so what's happening this year is everything that's in Zone One will be in Okay, so what's happening this year is everything that's in Zone One will be enforced as it always has been. And one of the big pushes that we're going to make this season is anything that's attached and growing to a structure. You know, buglavia, wisteria, vines, ivy, that's actually on the house, on the building, is going to be enforced as kind of like a phase-in process to this Zone Zero adoption to where this is like, you need to get all this vegetation off of your house. That's this year. And that, that code is also in Zone One. So if you look at the 410, which is the inspection report, within Zone One, it says nothing growing, living, attached to your structure. So until now, we've kind of let some of those things slide. If it was lean and green and looked healthy and people were maintaining it, but this year's going to be the first year where it's like, okay, nothing growing on or attached to the house. Now, in, I'll tell you why this hasn't been totally phased in at the legislative process at Sacramento, is Zone Zero is very broad-based. So they're saying no combustible materials within Zone Zero. Okay, but what do we all have in Zone Zero? Well, we have side yard gates attached to your house, we have shade structures or trellises, we have decks, we have all these different things that are now attached to your house in this Zone Zero. What do we do with those things? So these are the things that have really made Zone Zero difficult to fully adopt. You know, people have little structures to hide their trash cans that are attached to their house. What does all this look like? If someone does have a nice wood fence that opens and closes to their house, do they have to have now metal swinging gates that are attached to their house within that first five feet? So these are all the things that are being talked about in Sacramento is, okay, how are we exactly going to do this? It's going to get, it's going to get very tricky. So that's why this year, it's going to be, there's going to be an education piece when the engine crews are out there. This year, it's nothing attached or growing to the house with the anticipation that Zone Zero is going, it is going to come. We just don't know exactly what the final Zone Zero product is going to look like.
When you say nothing this year, you're going to be enforcing nothing attached to the house. Are you including like fences?
No.
And things that are covering?
Only what's growing on walls.
Just vegetation on walls?
Yeah.
Yes.
And if you have some sort of a shade structure attached to your house in the back, and there's vines or buglavia on there, but it's nice and green and maintained, we're not going to worry about that this year. It's just whatever's attached to your exterior walls of your house.
And then I know there's some confusion regarding where do you start the zero to five feet? Is it from the...
Hold on. We need, as much as I really want to go down this path with you, I totally want to go because I'm fascinated with what's going to happen at my own house because I'm waiting to see how you pull that off.
Yeah.
We have to stick to this topic.
What?
This topic is...
Are you saying that I can't ask a question about the...
No, we're just veering off on talking about the zero to five, where we're supposed to be talking about the fire zones only here is what the topic is. Right? Or no? If you're game, we can wander aimless. I'm good.
I'm just, because he's saying he's going to have some partial enforcement on it, and I just need to know where does the five feet start? Is it from the, because we have lots of eaves here in Rolling Hills.
Yeah, so, structure, right there. This is Zone Zero.
The wall, the exterior wall.
Exterior wall.
So not, not five feet from the exterior of the eve of that wall?
So if you have a five-foot overhang, your Zone Zero still starts at the wall.
Okay, okay. That's...
Good, sorry.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just, people want to know these things.
To get that answer, and then we can get back on to the task.
Do you have anything else in here?
No, that was it.
Okay, so for me, the one thing is, I don't want to change the map, but I want you to inspect everybody, and if someone's a problem, because most people are going to, in general, work with you on solving your problems when you guys notify it, and then we just need to know the people who aren't, and then we can figure out what we have to do from there. Because the insurance thing is a real problem. I'm fortunate, mine has moved to moderate where my house is. So, but I've talked to State Farm, and they said, we don't care, we're going to still charge you a gazillion dollars.
Yeah.
So that's what that is, and I'd really like to know what day you're coming to and tell my wife, she has to take all the plants off the side of the house.
Well, if you're in moderate, you won't, you won't be inspected.
Well, no, but we need to be. We, everyone has to be. Not, don't avoid us, but I'm saying is, you have to inspect everybody because I think, when I look at this map, even though down here at the bottom, like we were saying, the fire's either going to start here...
Yeah.
Or there, so we can't have here be ignored to the best of our ability. But I think you're going to, this is Zone Zero thing's going to be holy smokes.
Oh, it's...
Because you start chopping down, you start chopping down everything in the first five feet, you just go, just to pool decks and whatever, so, good luck.
I know.
Okay, so, thanks very much. We're going to open to public comment, and the comment is, ask your questions, we're going to write them down, and then at the end, Chief's going to come back and answer the questions. Okay?
Perfect.
So just, so this is not a here and there, so, go ahead. Fred, you're first?
Yes, okay. So the areas in Rolling Hills that have been reduced, you go from very high fire hazard zone to just a high fire hazard zone, or to a moderate?
Someone from, so they used to be all very high, and it went from high, very high, some are high, and some are moderate, and some are none.
Okay. So my understanding as far as the insurance issue is, they're concerned about the very high and the high. That's their major concern, as far as I know. I'm on, you're lucky, you still have real insurance. I've got the fair plan, okay? So my suggestion, and they're only going to inspect the very high, so my suggestion would be, and enforce. You guys are going to have to make an ordinance so that it can be enforced, at least in the high, okay? As far as the moderate and the low, I think it should be done also, but you're going to be able to have to enforce it, you're going to have to pass an ordinance, and they're going to have to tell you, at least in the high, that there's, you know, it didn't pass the inspection, but we can't enforce it, so you guys are going to have to pass an ordinance to allow enforcement through, through the code, through your process, just like your dead vegetation enforcement, okay? That's my comment on that issue. The other comment that I have is that, gee whiz, guys, they use the data from, what is it, 2007 to 2018? They missed all the high, they missed all the major fires, 2019, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24. You know, again, you know, no input from the local fire people. They just went out and did their models, and we know how good their models are, right? Every time there's a major fire, it's gee whiz, our models didn't assume that. Oh my goodness, what a surprise. Right from Laguna, right from the Laguna Hills area fire, all the way to Palisades. Every time, I hear every state, state, time, GR models didn't take that into consideration. I don't know what these guys are thinking of, to tell you the truth, but that's a different issue, that's a different story. Whether you, whether you want to fight that and get it, everything back into very high hazard and/or high hazard, that's up to you folks. But I can see the insurance concern, I understand that, but again, just like Jeff said, the insurance companies don't care whether, they're just going to look around the area and say, oh, you might be in a moderate area here, but right next door, you're high, higher, very high, so the heck with you guys. We're either not going to give you insurance, or we're just going to jack it way up anyway. So, but in order to enforce, assuming they give you the inspections and give you the information, in order to enforce it, you're going to have to make a code change. Okay, thanks.
Melissa?
Melissa McNabb, 11 Quail Ridge Road South. I had a couple of questions about this information. I was also on the Peninsula Safety Committee call back in the beginning of the month, and one thing that I wasn't clear on at all were the pros and cons. So pros and cons of high fire severity versus moderate versus low, which now are all in effect in the city. That would be of interest to me to, you know, what difference does it make if the insurance companies don't care? If it doesn't make any difference, then what's the point? What difference does it make? So that would be of interest to me to know. And then also the process, they've, I've heard them say several times that the city could request or could work on having the zones raised in those areas where they were lowered. What's that process? Does it cost a lot of money? Does it take two years? What's the process to achieve that? And again, if there's a benefit to that, what is that? And I think residents would like to know what that means. I mean, this was all informative, but I mean, what does it really mean to people in black and white day to day? So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Any other comment? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment. So my understanding is two things here. One is, we are required to pass something, so that's the first thing, which is pass this. Then the second part is, at any time, we can change how the rules work, correct? So if we wanted to make it all-inclusive or not all-inclusive, we could change that later.
Well...
Who can ask the chief? Do you know, or do we have to go to the state legislator or to CAL FIRE?
Oh, come on up, chief.
Substantial evidence to show.
Yeah, well, there's going to be problems, I get it, but...
So I don't know exactly, but my understanding is, from what I think, is if you choose not to adopt now and keep it the way that it was previously, versus moving, going back would be more difficult. So I think it would be, if you, if you choose to keep it the way it was or is now, don't adopt, and then lobby for to keep it the way it is.
Okay, and if we pass it right now, you're going to inspect like it was the old plan.
This year, nothing changes.
Nothing changes for us.
No.
This year.
So this year, so we can do is, adopt this now, so we meet California law, then we can figure out the rules and what are those pieces are. Also, you can give us feedback if anyone's pushing back on the rules, because my assumption, which I'm probably wrong, is if you told so-and-so that they have to do this, and they say, no, we need to get a flavor for what that is, and then make a decision. Because the insurance thing's totally real. I mean, that's, and when I look at this thing, and where the yellow ones are versus the orange ones versus the red ones, there might be 60 houses in those pieces, so we can't do those sort of things.
Yeah.
So I want to be careful of what that looks like. So I think the question here is, to me, we should, we have to pass what this is, we just pass it, and then let's learn about how we adjust or how we do those things. Can we, is it have to be universal? Like, we have to color the whole map in red? Or can we make it a little more red here and go around? I mean, how do we do this so we can adjust to where the problems are? I think the learning about it, but it's not, no one knows today, so...
My, sorry, can I, my understanding is that if you decide to increase the area, that you have to do it within 120 days.
120 days of now?
Of, I believe, when we received it, so it would have been March 24th. I believe that's...
We can have it next year.
Right.
I don't, do you know how often the maps come out? Is it...
No, because this has been the first rendition in quite a while. I mean, the adoption phase here is, it must be adopted within 120 days of the release of the maps.
Troy's there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Troy's there.
Right.
Can I, can I ask, so you heard Melissa McNabb's questions, which I thought were very pertinent. What, it says in here that the insurance companies are looking at risk, not hazard.
Yeah.
So they're looking at something different, but a lot of times, risk and hazard, the same things can overlap. But what, what difference would it make if we did want to make everybody very high? I mean, is that, besides giving us the ability to do the inspections, would that impact them differently by, to the insurance company who the commission says is not using this? They're using risk, and the risk is not changing.
Right.
And is that going to be then more expensive to the residents? Are we putting some onus on them to maintain at a higher level than we should be? So do you have any answers to those specific questions that she asked?
No, I mean, there's, there's a lot of pros and cons to this, I think. I can't really speak to the insurance thing, that's not my area. I will say that if lowering the standard for those, there's individuals out there that need a little nudge or a little push in order to maintain certain properties or certain areas within the city. Lowering the standard, and some of those people that may fall outside of these maps, now, those individuals kind of have a free range to just like, oh, I can let my property grow and do whatever I want with it because I'm no longer going to be enforced. I think that's one of the repercussions of this, of some individuals that could potentially be falling off of the map versus not being inspected or held accountable for their properties as far as defensible space.
All right, so here's, for me, where I think we should go here is, one, when you guys do the inspection, inspect everyone, is, and then treat everyone the same. I know you can't have the hammer at the end, but hey, we're inspecting, we have these problems, we're going to come back and look.
Yeah.
Most people are going to treat that very seriously, the fact that you're going to come back and look, let's see how big of a problem we have, because the insurance thing, I mean, my insurance is nuts already, and I'm happy to have it and pay for it. So I'm just concerned on creating a problem that, for more, because there's two things here, the insurance problem, their map, which doesn't really, I mean, who knows who's even using this, so I...
The insurance companies, 100% will be using this map.
I think they'll use this, and they'll use whatever makes it the worst.
Insurance companies every day, they'll look at this map.
Okay, so I think, I think we need to just pass this, what it is right now. We have 120 days to adjust if we need to.
We can learn.
I have a question.
It has to come this month, we have to do it by June.
I have an additional question. So I know, Chief, that you've said that you will, in fact, inspect all the properties in Rolling Hills this year. My question is, because I know the Fire Department has limited resources, we hear about that all the time at all the city meetings, I go to, notwithstanding the fact that we passed, you know, the proposition. So are you going to get pushed back to doing that every year so that you're going, they're going to say to you, like, we don't want your people inspecting Rolling Hills homes if they're not in the very high fire severity zone?
I think there's going to be pushback from residents.
No, I meant from your department, because it's resources to have to send out...
There will be pushback within the department. I would say that your community is a little bit unique, and it's manageable with the personnel that we have here, with the limited number of residents that you have. You're kind of segregated, you're behind the gates and so forth. And, you know, if I ask them, hey, could you please drive by and inspect all the houses? I'm sure they would accommodate. Now, if we're talking about the entire peninsula or the greater Los Angeles County area, then yes, you have a definite point with that.
Right. I mean, if they're going to...
But your particular community, I think is...
If they get pushback from other communities to say, you've got to be equal to everyone, then we could be losing out on the inspections.
Yeah, I could maybe even see some pushback this year from, I'm falling off the map next year, why are you being so hard this year? That could potentially be coming as well.
But if we adopted making us the whole area by high, very high, then you would not be subjected to, you're still going to be subjected to, from the residents, but from the higher-ups telling you to the department, if this is what the city has requested, if we did upscale that, or designate that, you would be required to do it, but you might get pushed back from up above if you are inspecting more if we haven't declared the whole area.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, we, yeah, we hear you. I know where you're going. Is, all right, someone want to make a motion or do something here? Because my viewpoint is, we should accept it as it is. My viewpoint is, the Fire Department's going to go out and inspect, and if we have a problem, then we'll have to figure out what we're going to do. The insurance is a real issue, and I think if we were talking about this, if people were aware that this was the conversation of, I'm approving this map, or by the way, everyone on all these little parts here, we're going to about make it harder for you to get insurance, we'd have 60 people in here having a serious problem with the fact that we're going to make their insurance goes from eight grand to 200 grand.
Well, I do have an additional question, because if we're...
Well, I do have an additional question because if we're thinking of trying to push back, which we only have 120 days to be able to say, oh, we should go back to where we were, which Rolling Hills was actually all in the very high fire severity zone. So we have some areas that are not even in any type of fire zone. So if we were to do that, I know, I think you mentioned it a previous time when you spoke about this issue, that there requires substantial evidence and that there would have to be some kind of challenges to the data that was used by the, by Cal Fire to determine these maps. I mean, do we have the opportunity to see what they relied on and what evidence they used to make that determination? Because if not, it's going to be very difficult to combat it if we don't know what they considered and what their evidence was for the decision.
And I would say that's, that's a Cal Fire question.
Okay, so you don't have any intel on that?
LA County Fire didn't have anything to do with any of these.
Yeah, I understand, but maybe they gave it to you to explain because you're the face of the, I mean, I don't know.
I see where you're going, but unfortunately, this is what they gave me. So go by.
I think that's a really good point is how much money, time and energy are we going to try to go prove that Cal Fire's map is wrong? That they've spent five years and X gazillion dollars.
And then there's residents who don't want to be in the very high fire severity zone. So I'm sure that they would be not real happy about that. So.
Okay, so someone will make a motion?
I will. So we have the option of approving or disapproving and that's it right now. We have 120 days to do that.
Or you can table it for further consideration.
Oh, sorry.
And that's the only choices we have right now. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
It's 120 days from receiving the map, which we received back in March. So, yeah, it does have to be done in June, which is next month. So it's.
But the only choices we have are approving or disapproving and that's it. We haven't any options for modifications. We haven't got options for maybe, can we look at it again next year? We have no choices on that.
That's, yes, that's my, yes, it's, you have the option to approve or disapprove.
And you can't, this, we cannot at this point say that we want this, you know, we had an option to upgrade to making everything, the entire area, the entire city, very high. We can't do that at this point?
I mean, given the timeframe, it's, I don't, I don't think we could do that within the 120 days that the state allows because there's also the, the amount of time that the map has to be publicly available. And if the map is going to be changed, that has to be factored in as well. So the, and there needs to be substantial findings to support the change too. So it's, we would have to be able to present evidence to show why the map has to change as well.
I suppose my question too would be, given that they're giving us this information in March, I know we could have asked for the evidence underlying the decision earlier, but that's a relatively short time period. Do you think there's a legal position to be able to say, we disapprove it this time and make a request for the data supporting the, the decision they made regarding Rolling Hills? And then we're asking for additional time to respond once we've provided this data because we have not received it heretofore?
I, I, I mean, this timeframe is being given to every city in the state. So I don't know, I don't, I don't know if they would make an exception for us or make any kind of, give any kind of leeway. I, I don't know.
And here's my other thing too, is the HOA and us, we're talking about things we're doing to improve the fire safety of the community. HOA is spending a ton of money and time improving it. The goal is to get the map less red, right? Over time is to keep improving in the right direction. As to me, the fact that it changed a little bit in our favor is a good thing as long as the fire department is willing to go out and inspect because the fire department is willing to go out and inspect and we're going to cross that bridge when we get there. This is.
So just so you know, my personal feeling, I think the map is wrong. I think we're still in all red. It's certainly like Pine Tree Lane. Why the heck is Pine Tree Lane? It's right next to me and it's, it's now something not higher than. That being said, if this gives some of our neighbors the opportunity to maybe get a little lower insurance rate, I'm for it. But if by them not keeping their properties good, it makes their neighbors more likely to get burnt down. I'm not very happy about that either. But I would make a motion that we approve the map because this potentially could help some of our neighbors get lower insurance rates.
I'll second it.
Can you discuss?
Discuss, wait.
My concern on the issue with the insurance, and I've talked about this quite a bit with my insurance agent. The insurance company, I know, Jim, that you think they're going to use this map. I'm not going to say they're going to disregard it, but if you happen to have a house in the orange, in the immediate, medium zone or the only high zone and the street next door to you is very high, the insurance company is not going to say, you in the medium zone, you're going to have a different rate or we're going to insure you and we're not going to insure your, your neighbor right, right next door to you. So I'm, I'm not seeing the relevancy, again, back to Melissa's point of what difference it is going to make with, with the insurance. I mean, I would, I would love to have been able to say, I don't, in a perfect world, I'd say, I don't want to approve this. I don't want to adopt it. I would like to make, even though a lot of my neighbors would be very upset, I would like to make the whole city red. But Jeff's point is excellent is that we're doing so many things to try and make the whole city not red. So it's almost counterproductive.
You can approve or you can not approve.
Yeah.
And, you know, I respectfully disagree with you completely. I work with insurance companies and I guarantee that a great big insurance company, the person who's doing it isn't visiting Rolling Hills. And they have Cal Fire's map right there and they know if they don't do something, they can get sued if they don't offer it. And they got a map saying, oh, this is low. And if they do, here's a map. They have to use it. They have to.
And if they, if we don't adopt it?
Then we're supposedly going back to our red from previous. Is that what we're saying? If we don't adopt it, but that may not actually work either. But if we go with, so the whole thing was red before. If we don't accept this, does that mean we still believe that we're all high fire? Or does that not necessarily mean that at all?
And then we have to spend money, time and energy to prove it so that way we can maintain that.
Right.
Because there's going to have to be that part. We're going to have to get all the data.
I think this is going to help some of our neighbors.
Yeah, and I'll tell you.
I really do.
My insurance at my house went from about 2,500 a couple of years ago. I'm paying close to $10,000 right now. I have friends in Beverly Hills up against the hill a little bit and their houses are in the same size range as ours. One of my friends is paying $85,000 right now for his insurance. And these are the type of numbers we're seeing out there. And all our insurance, I mean, my insurance across the board in every building we own has gone up four, 500%.
Well, and one of the reasons we're lower than that is we don't have a history of fire here in Rolling Hills. So.
Okay, so we're going to, there's a motion, we're going to vote. Roll call. Councilmember Mersch.
Thank you for doing me first. Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Derringer. And Mayor Piper. Yes. Okay. I've eaten, here's my agenda. All right, Chief, thanks for coming.
Good, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
All right, we're going back to 11A. Consideration of ordinance 386 amending chapter 17.16 of the municipal code regarding the height limits of a single family resident home, stable, barn, find action in the sequel.
Good evening, Mayor Piper and City Council. The Planning Commission has been reviewing height regulations since last October, noting that our code did not specify numeric height limits, only that buildings could not be more than one story. There have been recent trends that have shown that there is an increase in structured heights. Recently, over the past year, stables with some new buildings have been exceeding 25 feet. Tonight, City Council is going to be considering ordinance 386, which amends our municipal code to establish clear numeric height limits for single family homes, stables and barns. The goal is to preserve the Rolling Hills scenic beauty, rural character and ensure that new development remains consistent with the established community values. Staff recently, sorry. Chair Chell from the Planning Commission had requested staff conduct a, do some research on current heights and structures of homes and barns and stables. Staff identified that between the years of 2017 and 2024, the average height for a home is 17 feet. The high end of homes and stables are 25 and the low end of 11. This has become a bit of.
There's a house with an 11-foot peak ridge line.
This is a combination of roofs, of stables and homes and barns. So it's a combination.
Flat shelter for a barn or something. Because there's no, there's no way there's a house.
74 Portuguese Bend Road has it documented as their stable being at 11 feet in height.
So it's a flat.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. So.
There's no way a house.
Right. So the real reason why this has been coming up is that during my time here and briefly before, if not some time before, homes have been coming before the Planning Commission that are larger. And there's been a lot of discussion on this, how tall homes should be, but also recognizing that stables and barns should also be considered as they're getting, slightly are increasing in height. Based on this study, staff indicated to the Planning Commission that you have an option to consider establishing a height for just homes, the structure of a home and/or including stables and barns. The municipal, the municipal ordinance number 386 amends chapter 17.16, which allows the City Council to consider not amending just one, but two components of the municipal code. Those are section 17.16.060, section 17.16.080. Specifically, section 17.16.060, which addresses lot area and dimensions. As highlighted in the screen and as well as in your staff report, the areas that are going to be amended are underlined in the attached. This indicates that for the height limit under the lot area and dimensions, one story of a property no greater than 18 feet. And it also addresses that stables and barns, which shall be no greater than 20 feet. The new language for section 17.16.080 addresses high limits specifically under subsection A, general limitation. Here, it also highlights language that addresses the recommended height as established by the Planning Commission that is listed as the minimum height permitted for finished floor to the peak of the structure shall be no greater than 18 feet and stables and barns, no greater than 20 feet measured from the finished floor. Other areas to consider is the environmental and the fiscal considerations. The ordinance is statutorily exempt from the sequel review under Public Resources, section 21080.17. And making this recommendation and approving it tonight does not have any fiscal impact associated with the adoption. There is a public process that is attached to addressing or bringing forth an ordinance. And that is when the planning commission held three meetings that addressed the heights of structures, barns and stables, allowing public comment to be brought to their attention if they had any concerns with the established or recommended heights. Following the recommendations, the city had to notice tonight's meeting and it was published on May 1st, 2025. As of the report of, publishing of the status of this report, there have been no public comments. Staff did meet with the community association and they're in concurrence with the recommendations provided by the Planning Commission. And I do want to note that the community association manager is in, and will join us with this tonight. If there are any questions, she'll be available to answer. And once this is addressed this evening, it will have to come back as a second hearing before City Council. Once it is approved at the second hearing, which is currently scheduled to come before the council on the 9th, it will take into effect 30 days. The recommended City Council action for this evening is to open the public hearing and receive public testimony, close the public hearing and by motion, one, find that the adoption of the proposed ordinance is statutorily exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act with Public Resources Code, sections 21080.17, and introduce for the first reading by title only, ordinance number 386 regarding the height limits of single family residential homes, stables and barns. At this time, Mayor Piper, this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Why are we doing this?
Why?
Just do it.
No.
Don't.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, no question.
I do. I'm looking at your list here and I know some of the streets pretty well. And it's got two houses, supposedly new construction on Pine Tree Lane, 12023 to 1217, one with a plate, roof height of 13 feet and one of 12. There hasn't been two new houses built in Pine Tree Lanes in, since 2017. So is it a guest house? Is it a remodel? What is it?
You're looking at the resolution.
2023, 14, 2017, 20.
They're not.
This data was gathered based on resolutions that are already come before City Council. So that indicates a home. If it's an ADU, it's labeled as an ADU. So.
There haven't been two new houses built on Pine Tree.
Okay. These are homes that are currently recorded as having some type of addition to their homes or had done some type of.
Might be a wing with a low plate height without the center part being such a high. I just think there's, our numbers are not real.
Okay.
I mean, the reality is, whose house has the peak ridge line of 12 feet and 13? Nobody. It's impossible. This, this room here wouldn't make this. So why are.
Oh, no. One, I by accident was at one of these meetings. Two, I was working with the city manager. This is 15 feet.
Right.
No, and so the limit is 18 feet, which is three feet higher than this. And if your architect is doing what an architect would do, you would just spin the room the other direction. So instead of the roof going this way, you could make it go that way if you wanted to go tall. Right? If you wanted to hire ridge plates or whatever that is, which has limitations next door.
So I do have some questions.
Okay, so then we're going to.
A bit of a public comment.
Hold on, you have questions for Kristen?
Because, because this is, I'm obviously going to vote no. And these are stupid numbers.
Okay, we're okay with both those answers. So, so how about this? I'm going to open the public comment. Is there any public comment?
Yeah, me.
Come on up, Fred.
Come on down.
Obviously, I haven't been paying attention. If I, I would have known these things were coming up in front of the Planning Commission, I would have made some comments. How many houses in Rolling Hills actually have Alfred Visko 15th Century?
Thank you very much.
How many houses in Rolling Hills actually have less than an 18-foot peak?
Not many.
I bet you there's hardly any, okay? What happens when a house gets burned down? You're going to let me rebuild to my old, or am I going to be limited to 18 foot? What happens if I'm damaged and it includes part of my, my roof? You're going to let. You're gonna let me build back to eighteen feet? This is, this number is just pulled out of the air. I'm going to bet you that in, I don't know how many houses we have in Rolling Hills. I'm going to bet you that there isn't a house in Rolling Hills that's less than an eighteen-foot at some point in their, in their, in their peak. And, and, and I can't think of any, nothing along the centering. Okay? So unless Leah's house is less than eighteen feet, which I can't see from the road, let me, let me say from the road, from what I can see.
If, if this is fifteen, is that what you said this was? Fifteen here?
That's fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's, and that we're talking, this is the inside. The outside measurements would be even higher.
Yeah, of course.
Like my house isn't that tall.
Room, this building would not be allowed on this.
So you could go, no, fifteen, so you go two feet taller, and we get variances.
I'm, I'm sure my house is.
We get various, okay. Okay, all right.
I know.
Freddie, anything else?
So that's, that's my comment. I, I, I don't see the, the, what, what's the reason for this? Are people complaining that the houses are nineteen-foot tall? That they, that it's cut down their view or something? This is a view issue. All I can see. And, and unless you've been getting a lot of complaints about houses impacting people's view because they're taller than eighteen feet, this just seems to me to be a, a solution in search of a problem. Okay, that's my take on this. So I don't see why you should be limiting people to their houses. Stables I don't want to address because I don't have a stable or, or, or any of that. But houses, I don't think you should be limiting people to eighteen feet, as long as it's one story. As long as you meet the definition of one story. Thank you.
Okay. Judith?
Judith, can I ask, please feel dry?
Um, can, I know you're not allowed to ask questions, but can you repeat what instigated this? Because if you're talking about heights of things, that, did the Planning Commission bring this to you, and that's why they're trying to limit stuff? Because I've been at Planning Commission's meetings lately, and I'm not too happy about size of houses, let alone the heights of houses. So why is it now an issue about heights and not about size?
There are, okay, do you have any other questions? That's it? Okay, there, there's rules on sizes based upon grading and pad coverage. There's a whole bunch of rules on what that is, that limits what that looks like. Currently, right now, there is no height limitation on anything. So.
We've, there's no, there's no regulation to heights.
None.
Seriously?
None.
But build at whatever height they want?
Nope, yeah, so.
But you can't build a second story.
Correct.
But you can build high. And same with barns, because like barns seem a little bit different because somebody might want a hay loft.
You can build.
Yeah, so, so there's limitations on the sizes of the houses. You might not like it, but that had, then has a rule, and we can adjust, or we can give you a variance to do something special. There is no limitation currently on the height, and so this will create that. If there's a reason Fred's house catches on fire, he wants to rebuild it and needs a variance to do that, we're going to give him a variance to do that. They're just trying to put something in there to start from somewhere. And if we can find out that this is a good idea or a bad idea, whatever, it's adjustable down the road, but it needs to have something that makes that happen.
So when you're saying that this is just, this is just a, an idea of what has happened between two thousand seventeen to twenty-four, you're saying from when houses first got built here till now, there's never been a limit on height?
Technically, no.
Really? Okay. Surprising. Thank you.
All right. Jim, do you have, you want to talk to, do you want, okay, come on up.
Hi, so obviously, you know the rules better than anyone. We've always done plots and lots and, so we've not done, I mean, here we've got things on plate heights and stuff, and we don't do plate heights. You guys do plate heights. And here I've got definitions of plate heights at eight foot six, nine, and all that. Are these your numbers?
These are ours.
So these are. And then for us, ridge line, I always thought it was twenty-two feet. Do you guys have a number on ridge line? Ridge height?
Not really.
So it's kind of like this, you know? And then do you make any distinction between, um, uh, uh, homes on grade, like on a slab, versus homes that are on a, a elevated foundation? Because that makes a big difference, too, and if you don't address that, the whole thing is even more stupid.
Almost every house is on a slab. So there's, well, I mean, there's houses that are on a basement, so, um.
But a lot of them are on, on raised foundations, too.
But the modern houses that we're seeing built are, okay.
Because suddenly, if you're on a raised foundation, that adds three or four feet right off of that.
From finished floor.
Right, that's why it doesn't, you can't compare.
Slab or raised foundation is irrelevant.
Except that if you're on a slab, you're not getting as high a.
No, no, finished floor, finished floor.
Is the same. So when they come out and certify that the ridge is.
Thing is about obstructing your neighbors, the mass, the house, what it looks like. A raised foundation will look bigger with the same ridge line from finished floor. Because it'll be three or four feet higher.
Sure.
So did you take that in consideration? With the stupid idea?
Hold on, it's all fine. Do you have any other questions?
Those were my questions for Kristen, and so, um, I just want to know, because I thought, because you guys do plate heights, and you guys, I always thought did ridge lines also as well, but I thought you kind of did to your architectural committee.
We do, um, and there's also the massing, I mean, a, I'm sorry, Kristen Regg, I'm the association manager. So ranch style is the style of homes in Rolling Hills. So one story, that is a definition of ranch style. And by the time somebody has plans that they are presenting to us, and even to you guys at some point, people have invested a fair amount of money. And so a few years ago, talking about plate heights, plate is what the wall to the ceiling looks like and how tall that is. And we know, you know, with the Italian-style houses and Mediterranean, they are much taller than the traditional low-slung ranch-style houses. Everybody likes having the super-tall doors and the windows and everything. So we started seeing the plate heights go up and up and up, and so they were looking a lot less like ranch houses. So, and people would design these houses and come to the architectural committee, and the architectural committee said, this isn't a ranch house, you know? And people are mad because they've spent twenty thousand dollars on a set of plans, and we've just said no. So, or the committee has said no. And so to remedy that problem and keep houses looking like ranch houses, and less like aversion, or some, a, a different style of house that has some ranch features, the association came up with a formula that said, really, eight-foot-six is the, the best plate height, you know, wall height, um, for a ranch house. But, you know, smaller percentages, we understand, you need to find the front door. There's other areas that are entertaining areas where they need to be higher. So the association came up with this formula that said, the minimum eight, house can have, must have this amount of eight-foot-six plate heights. And because we did that, we gave people some parameters. They weren't so mad, and they didn't spend so much money on plans that could not be approved. We gave them a box that they had to stay in, and if they were out of the box, that was their problem. Then we could say, listen, this doesn't meet our calculations. We told you what they were. Go back and fix this. And so giving people parameters helps. Even though it feels like, oh, we're putting so many restrictions on people, it, it really isn't, you know? And, you know, frankly, I don't live in Rolling Hills, but if I bought a house and I had a really fabulous city light view, and then somebody built a house that was four or five feet taller and wiped out my city lights, I might be kind of mad. I would be, or, you know, and pretty upset about it. So, um, it's something to think about, you know, yes. From what I understand, from what I read from the memos, that there's different plate heights, one for the house, one for the barn, because one's two-story, and then another one for ADUs. So, um, you know, it's, it's, the association supports having a maximum height for residences and barns.
All right. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment.
I, I don't know why we did this. Who, who did the, the, did, did Karina bring it up to them, or did they bring it up to her? I don't really understand.
I don't know who, who brought it, go ahead and add to that, and then I, I'll speak as a ex-Planning Commission person.
During the summer of, um, twenty-four, the summer months, there had been discussions with the then Planning Director and, and, and Planning Chair Chell about the variances in, in homes that were being constructed, and they were coming before the city for consideration for the planning, uh, for Planning Department, Planning Commission. And homes were getting slightly increasing, like taller than what they had been receiving in the past. It wasn't until October of two thousand twenty-four, Chair Chell said, you know, I'm going to ask that staff conduct a study. We're seeing that there's some variances in homes being constructed and or remodeled, and even the barns are looking better, bigger. Could you do a study just to kind of look back the last couple of years to see how these homes are? How tall are they? Just out of curiosity, they're getting larger or bigger. And based on that study, staff came back and presented to them. It was a different one. I think we added more, we expanded it to include more like ADUs and stables. And based on what was being presented, there has been a slight increase in heights for homes. We got direction to conduct more studies, and we presented it a second meeting and said, how would you like to proceed? Would you like for staff to come back with language? Do you want to just address it that, yes, we're going to continue having to work directly with the consultants and the applicants and trying to address heights of homes? Or would you like to at least try to bring before the City Council options on height limits for houses? And as I said, there's been three meetings discussing about heights, and the direction was to report these recommendations to the City Council for approval and consideration. The reason why you'll notice that we have all those plate heights from the association is because we wanted to collaborate with them to kind of see, are you identifying or noticing the similar trends? And in these discussions, they provided us, yes, and here's kind of what we did to address these as they were coming in. So all of this research was to be mindful of what the Community Association is doing. Granted, two separate houses, two different actions are being taken from two different boards. Um, but we wanted to be inclusive and, and learn a little bit about what they're doing. So this is a product of working together and coming up with these, um, with these height limits. Now, I don't have the specifics on the resolutions on many of these. I, I should have had that prepared to kind of identify why that property was at eleven feet. And you have some properties that if you, and if you add the height of the home plus the cupola, which is an additional five feet, that home looks even larger, even taller. Another thing that I do want to mention is that around that same time, in, in the summer of two thousand twenty-four, um, code enforcement was called to address a property, a home that had a loft. And because the house was tall, it had room to add this additional layer of the home. And it wasn't until it was brought to your attention, and the code enforcement officer went to go inspect the property, that, yes, indeed, that the roof line, the house was tall, and therefore it could allow for a loft to be added. We have a section that doesn't allow for lofts. So these are just co- components in which it, it grew from there, but it was direct, a directive from the Planning Chair to bring it before them, and this is where we are here today. Mayor Piper just happened to be in that meeting that evening and really got to engage in the dialogue and listen to the discussions, but, um, this is why we're here this evening, and, um, I hope I addressed that, at least, why, how we got to this, the journey to here.
Okay, there's, all right. Just vote no, Jim. All right, so first, I'm going to make a motion. We find that the adoption of the proposed ordinance is statutory exempt from review under the California, or under SEQA, under the Public Resource Code, section two one zero eight zero point one seven. Is there a second?
How do I vote against this thing?
Just vote no both times.
Okay.
Aren't you going to include in the second part?
Well, I was going to do one. Don't, you need both pieces?
You can.
Take us one. An introduction, the first reading by title, ordinance number three eight six regarding the height limits of a single-family residence, home, stable, and barns.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Wait, can we, any discussion?
You want to have a discussion? Jim's going to vote no, and we are going to hopefully forget.
I mean, I don't think it's our job to make the city agree. We've done it with this building. Do we really want it with the rest of the city?
Okay, all right.
As, on the Planning Commission, the issue about the loft has come up several, several times, because we do not, when you have these really high buildings, we don't look at the inside of the plans. We don't approve what goes on, you know, their kitchen here and their kitchen is there. And you make the ceilings, you, you make them tall enough, people are putting in lofts, number one. If they come to us before they come to the association, we, we let them, we would say, well, you know, the height isn't to us. We, we, we don't look at that. We don't have any rules on it. I think that we often wished we'd had some type of rules on it. I, I never thought of it as a view issue. That was never the, never the thing. There is a whole concept of massing, but, and the taller it is, the bigger it does look. But I never heard it as anything of a, of a view issue that we had. But I think that if you give applicants upfront a, a limit, it's much better. The reason these things are getting bigger is everybody says, well, look at the ones you just put in. You just approved this, you just approved this, and you get that creeping up, and it gets bigger and bigger, and then you prove the next bigger one and the next bigger one. So I think that it, it does help the applicant, and it addresses the, well, you approved it for this one, but, you know, why can't I have that one? So I, I think it, I, that's why I think it's a good idea.
I just think the numbers are completely arbitrary and too low. They're completely arbitrary and too low. And the twenty-foot barn, you've got to picture a painting of one of the most beautiful barns in the city out in there, and it would not be allowed with this ordinance. And that's the one on Crest Road, and, and all of those barns like that would not be allowed under this ordinance.
Which Crest Road barn?
The one with the opossum?
Yeah, with the beautiful, their picture, there, there's a Boyle painting of it right out in the other room. You know, Crest Road.
That you think that's taller than twenty feet?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, not even close.
It is arbitrary.
We have a first and a second, we're going to vote. Can we have a roll call? Councilmember Mersh?
Yes.
Member Black?
Nope.
Mayor Pro Tem Derringer?
Yes.
And Mayor Piper? Yes, all right. Moving on to thirteen B, consideration proposed employee salary schedule and job classification modification. Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
A thirteen B. We would be done. We'd be done if you didn't show up.
Good evening, Mayor Piper and members of City Council. The item before you this evening on consideration for proposed employee salary schedule and job classification modifications was originally presented to you on May twelfth. And at that time, um, I was able to present to you a salary survey that consisted of a series of agencies that were approved by the Personnel Ad Hoc and then later approved by the City Council. Utilizing that salary scat, the list of cities, um, the city staff was able to, do a comparative city staff meeting, myself, um, conducted a survey utilizing those cities and the applicable classifications that were. The recommendations are to consider adjusting some salary titles, I'm sorry, some classification titles and creating a planning manager position, merging the code enforcement officer classification with the planning technician position, which means bringing in-house the code enforcement officer. And we currently have a vacant bookkeeper classification that, we didn't utilize that classification as a bookkeeper. However, we utilized that classification to do a lot of the in-person interaction with issuing construction and demolition permits, assisting with the planning department on reviewing plans, getting them processed and ready for review by the commission. The only difference between what was presented then and today is the actual salaries themselves. At that time, I presented a salary schedule of the median of all the classifications for those agencies and I kept the median at the top of the range as presented on the median schedule. However, the bottom was reduced by 5%. After discussion with the city council at that time, it was, I got direction from the council to work with the personnel ad hoc to look at the salaries once again, but not only just the salaries, but to also look at the agencies in which we surveyed. Those agencies included Carson, El Segundo, Hermosa Beach, Hidden Hills, Rancho Palos Verdes, Palos Verdes Estates and Rolling Hills Estates, to name a few. What I'm presenting this evening is a very similar salary schedule, except omitting the cities of Carson, as we discussed at the last council meeting, being it's just a very large organization with a very large budget and a greater level of population to meet, staffing to meet the grand level of population. We also eliminated the city of Hermosa Beach. Again, population, budget and agency size to population size was great, greater than. We did however include the cities of Bradbury, which is very similar to ours. We included the city of Avalon. Now, you may be thinking Avalon's in a far location, it's not very nearby, we're not really competing with personnel. However, their structure is very similar to the city of Rolling Hills. The salary schedule that's being presented in your packet reflects these agencies, but also adds a second layer. At that time, as I mentioned, I presented the salary schedule with the top end being the median, the bottom end being the median minus 5%. After meeting with the personnel committee, it was recommended for the city council to consider the salaries that are presented at this time. We still continued to utilize the median. However, instead of only reducing the base of the salary range, which is the bottom, by 5%, the recommendation was to apply a 10% reduction from the median across the board to the various classifications. In the actual present classification table that you have before you, I also included on the far right, one additional classification. And the reason why is because the planning manager position is currently available at these agencies. For those agencies that do not have a planning manager, an equivalent classification that has similar duties, responsibilities, has decision-making level authority, would be the senior planner. So the agencies that did not have a planning manager, the personnel committee along with myself, included the senior planners to replace those gaps for those that did not exist. Now, it required going through each classification to ensure that they did align as closely as they could. The planning manager classification here has been removed and separated, and the reason is as follows. Because the planning components and seeking planning vacancies and filling them has been competitive across the board, we as an agency struggled with it, you know, before me coming in onboard, but also even now, having consultants to find the right planner for our organization has been difficult. There's been a thin layer of recruitments out there for qualified competent planners because they're either not moving and/or they're just not available to work or interested in working for local governments. So the option was to keep the planning manager as listed for the top, for the top of the range of the median. And the reason why is because we still want to be competitive. We're not considered the higher end. And if you look at it, we're about eighth or ninth of the 11th agencies that are here, but it does allow room for growth. Ultimately, the planning manager, the goal for the organization is to retain quality people, but to retain individuals who want to stay long-term for the city to ensure that we have not only institutional knowledge, but historical knowledge and a relationship that they can develop with the residents. This classification of the future will be to replace them with the title of planning director. That is a long-term goal. So for the planning manager classification, the top will remain as presented as the median and the bottom, we did apply the 10%. Still keeps us competitive, but we're not out there as being the higher end of the hiring, the spectrum of hiring. Another added layer that I am recommending to city council this evening is looking at the code enforcement officer. You may notice that in the salary schedule, the code enforcement officer median is much higher. I'm recommending that we keep it at where we currently have it at, and that's the very bottom of that, of the, of the schedule. That's what we currently have listed, even though we don't have an in-house code enforcement officer, we retained that classification. I'm recommending that the city council adopt this salary schedule with the original salary range as presented. It is lower than the median, however, the reason I'm making this recommendation is because I'm blending and merging two different roles that is not identifiable and, and found in the comparative cities. It's very unique, it's not a one-size-fits-all, it's very focused on catering what we're looking for here in the organization. So that's that recommendation for the code enforcement officer. Now, what's not included in the staff report and I'm adding an alternative recommendation for the city council to consider this evening, is that in these classifications that I'm recommending, all of these currently have an incumbent in it, for the exception of the new classification, the planning manager and the code enforcement officer slash planning technician classification. All the other classifications are currently having an incumbent that has been with the agency for two years, three, and some of them just celebrated their one-year anniversary. I'm asking that the city council consider an alternative option of looking at the administrative assistant position and the management analyst. And instead of making any changes to those salary ranges, I'm asking the city council consider keeping it as presented in the original salary schedule that was approved and adopted in 2023, 2024 and 2024, 2025. Other items that are highlighted in the staff report, I just want to re, re, repeat as from the last council meeting, I am asking a title change for the city clerk. Instead of being the city clerk executive assistant to the city manager, it's eliminating the executive component. The city clerk assistant to the city manager would be the new recommended title. Moving forward, I do ask, I will inform the city council that any future changes or recommendations for any classification with the organization, as indicated in the handbook, will be coming before the city council for review and authorization and approval. As is indicated in the handbook, it should be done this way. I'm sorry, it's the first time you guys are receiving this type of presentation. However, to ensure transparency, this is a process that is required by state law, but also to ensure that everyone's aware of what the salaries are for government agencies in the state of California. With that being said, Mayor Piper and members of city council, that does conclude my presentation on the salary schedule and classification titles for the city. Your, the recommendation this evening is to adopt the salary schedule as stated this evening, maintaining the management assistant, management analyst and the code enforcement officer classifications as they were in the very beginning, changing the title of the city clerk from city clerk slash executive assistant to the city manager to city clerk assistant to the city manager, adopting the recommended title and salary schedule for the planning manager. And allow me to proceed with the recruitment process for the code enforcement planning technician classification as well as the planning manager classification. Mayor Piper and members of city council, that concludes my presentation. It's a lot of info, I know.
Leah, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Questions?
No.
No.
You guys worked with, you guys had a meeting?
Yeah.
We did. I mean, not so much on the, keeping the management analyst and administrative assistant portion, that's new, but we discussed the other stuff.
Okay. Any other questions?
I was just asking.
No, I'm just going to open it up in the closing.
And how was you guys all came to these numbers?
I think collectively, there was something, I added Avalon, but you know, and then, but then Jeff was looped in, because I was looking for some, but it's pretty close except for the water, right? You know, we can, we have a view of Avalon from, from the fire station. Yeah. But, but I thought it was more akin to our city than Hermosa Beach.
All right. No other questions? Then we're going to open up public comment. Is there any public comment? We're going to close public comment? All right. Someone want to, do you want to discuss or you have someone mind to make a motion?
I just wanted to ask again, because it wasn't in our ad hoc about the, the reasoning, because we talked about having an exception for the, for the items that we're hiring for, which would be the code enforcement, you know, slash bookkeeping one, and then, and then the planning manager and keeping that different than the 10%. But last we talked to is sort of like everybody else's, we're just going to do the, the range. And then because essentially if there's a need for something, we can always change it, but that's why I wanted to find out why, why was that added?
Sure. Great. Thank you for that. In reviewing this and getting questions asked, the incumbents, those salary schedules dropped significantly. And, and, and considering that we do have incumbents in those classifications that were hired originally in that salary range, even though they're not at the top step, they actually have a significant amount of room to still get there, they're at the lower end. It, it just gives them opportunity to continue to grow. By dropping it to the level that we did, it really places a cap for them to have additional growth.
And Bea, if I can add, I, I brought that up when I, when I noticed, I, I didn't think it was, I wasn't comfortable with taking somebody who was in, in the title, knew what a range was at the time they were hired and working and bringing that, the top down while they were incumbent in the position. I, I just was not comfortable with that. So that was a discussion.
Am I looking at the wrong page number? 172, is that the final one?
Yeah.
Because if I'm looking at the bottom one, under city clerk, what it was, current city salary range down at the bottom is lower than we settled on. So do you really?
Yeah.
172, right?
Yeah, 172. The, the city clerk, the bottom is 76, 24, 94, 97. That's not going to change. That was a recommendation with the 10% cut. The admin assistant and the management.
I'm sorry. Okay.
So that was okay.
Okay. I'm on the wrong one.
The high went higher, the low was lower.
Yeah.
Okay. It's only off by a teen bit.
So those two positions, yeah, those two positions were the ones that, they didn't all have that impact, but the management analyst and the administrative assistant did.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion? Or?
Okay. Okay. I'll get all the list of things, because there's different aspects of it. Okay. So I would make a motion to adopt the updated silly, silly city, no, the city salary schedule. There's lots of S-words in season and classifications. And do you want to take them separately or just all I want? I'll do all I want. Approval to replace the planning director classification with a planning manager classification, eliminate the administrative clerk slash bookkeeper position and bring code enforcement in-house under a new consolidated classification of code compliance officer slash planning technician and provide direction that the city manager begin recruitment for these revised and consolidated positions, AKA planning manager and the code compliance officer planning technician. Friendly amendment, did you include the change in the title for the city clerk assistant to the city manager?
That's included in the updated salary schedule and classifications.
Right. Okay. Yes. Part of the salary schedule and classifications, because that's the classification.
Inclusive of, and then maintaining the salary as originally presented for the management assistant, management analyst and administrative assistant.
Right. As discussed here. So that is, that is a change to what's shown here. So. Right.
That's correct.
Approve this with the exceptions that we just made. Right. Which would be for only those two classifications.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call. It's a lot of roll call.
Councilmember Mersch?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
No.
Mayor Protem Derringer?
Yes.
And Mayor Piper?
Yes.
And can I just ask, going forward, I, I thought when we discussed last time about the cities that we were going to be using as comparisons, that there was going to be a recommendation about what cities that we would use. I didn't think it was up to the ad hoc committee to unilaterally make those changes. So I'd like to see, I think this is fine, we needed to get this done and get it going for the purpose of getting the job, but I, I would like to see it come back. That was in the staff report. Back to us, to the council as a whole, to look at those. If you guys want, maybe you want to meet again to talk about it, but.
So why don't we do this? Is, we're done here.
Right.
Then why don't you, could you send everybody a note? If you have any issues on it, send it back in and then we can discuss it from there.
Well, it has to be changed in the handbook.
No, no, I get it. So right now, we have enough so we can go hire somebody because we're dying without that person.
We need to do, yes.
Okay, so we got to go do that. Then the next thing is, could we send out the list? If you have any questions or problems with who's on the list, let's get that information back, then Bea and I will meet again and then we'll bring it back together and then we'll bring it back for everyone to approve and then we'll add it to the, the list.
Personal.
Okay.
Could I make a friendly amendment to that list or motion? Cities that are, have structural deficits and going bankrupt should not be included on our list.
Well, there would be no one on the list.
That's correct. Only people who are financially responsible should be on our list.
Well, I don't, I don't know of anybody that does it that way, though. I mean.
If you're, if you're spending more than you have and you've got a structural deficit and you're going broke, we shouldn't compare you.
Well.
Because we don't want to be that.
But I appreciate that. At the same time, we, we always say, spend money on the people of our city. Right now, we don't have someone in charge of planning and it's problematic right now. And if I was spending four or five.
Problematic for a long time.
I know. And if I was spending four or five million bucks on a new house right now, I'd be pissed off that it's running how it's running right now. So we need to fix this and get this moving forward. I don't disagree, but this is the problem all the way around. We're competing against the cities next door to us. It's how it works. Okay. Anyways, we're moving on. Consideration proposed, oh, we already did that. Receive and file a public safety and emergency preparedness update. Samantha?
Piper and city council, this evening, staff will present a public safety update highlighting recent developments and ongoing preparedness efforts. Utility restoration is underway with Southern California Edison finalizing power restoration for six remaining properties that are in various stages of permitting. Weekly coordination meetings with SCE and LA County Building and Safety, LA County Fire Department and the RHCA continue to support the re-energization efforts. A timeline for gas restoration in Rolling Hills is expected within the next two weeks. SoCal Gas is actively surveying residents to assess the interest in gas restoration. The gas company recently updated their dedicated Palos Verdes Peninsula SoCal Gas website, announcing that they intend to begin infrastructure upgrades, including gas main replacements and installation of safety equipment, followed by leak testing and service restoration. followed by leak testing and service restoration for interested customers. Technicians will go door to door to resource, restore service, and will check the home for leaks and appliance compatibility with natural gas. Customers who have switched to alternative fuels or purchased new appliances to run on alternative fuels should consult with a licensed professional to check, to see if their appliances and house lines are ready for natural gas. SoCal Gas cannot modify, repair, or install customer house lines. Before this rollout, an informational webinar is planned for Rolling Hills residents, and staff will let community members know when this event is scheduled. It should be coming in the next several weeks. According to SoCal Gas monitoring records, Rolling Hills movement rates are at .1 inches per week or less, and all restoration plans are dependent upon substantial, substance, sorry, minimal land movement rates, which will continue to be monitored by SoCal Gas and other local partners. And I was going to do an update on the defensible space inspections, but Chief Kane has addressed most of that. I just wanted to restate that the, the fire department will be considering any plant vegetation on, on homes, and will be enforcing that. So regarding the volunteer buyout program, following the recent fires in the northern part of the county, Cal OES issued a notice of funding opportunity for hazard mitigation grant funding specific for Los Angeles County. On June 23rd, staff will be presenting information to the city council on the voluntary buyout mitigation program, with support from the Cal OES Assistant Director, Robin Finnig, who will provide an in-depth overview and insight into the program's structure, goals, and potential benefits to the community. Should the city council choose to direct staff to move forward with this funding opportunity, a draft notice of interest has been submitted as a placeholder to preserve the city's eligibility for FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. This submission does not obligate the city to finalize the notice of interest or submit a sub-application, which would be due September 15th of 2025. The voluntary buyout program enables jurisdictions to acquire residential properties at high risk from natural hazards and convert them to permanent open space to reduce future risk and enhance public safety. Regarding the sirens, HQE has provided sufficient, sufficient information to assess whether the three proposed new poles locations are acceptable to the RHCA Board of Directors. The board is scheduled to meet on June 5th, and then again on June 19th. And staff continue to coordinate with the siren vendor to finalize the operational phase for the existing sirens. And lastly, I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow, Thursday, May 29th, at 5:30 PM, Supervisor Janice Hahn, in partnership with the Los Angeles County Fire Department and the Peninsula Cities, will be hosting a community forum on wildfire prevention at the South Bay, or sorry, South Coast Botanical Gardens. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, any questions?
I have a question for our attorney, and this is gonna be a sudden thing that he's not heard of before. But, so, and maybe you need to get back to him, but I'm, given the situation we've had with our recent utility companies, wherein they have taken the liberty of entering the city, taking measurements from land owned by Rolling Hills residents, and have refused to share the data that they have retrieved from that land, do we have the ability to enact an ordinance that requires them that if they are entering our city, and if they take measurements of land, you know, for whatever purposes, or take any measurements, that they are required, that they cannot do so unless they, unless and until they sign an agreement that they will turn over that data that they receive upon a request?
That's something I could look into. However, the public utilities are governed by the Public Utilities Commission and Utilities Code, and there's likely requirements that they're abiding by under those, those laws that govern them that often preempt city laws. So I can look into it, I, I don't know if there is going to be any, any grounds for the city to pass such an ordinance. But that is, if that's the direction of council, I can, I can take a look.
Well, I mean, we are a little bit different in that we have no franchise with them, because we're not a public city, we're private, private roads, it has no access to the public. So every time they come in, it's at the, basically the permission of Rolling Hills Community Association. And so to me, given the posture they've taken with regard to our residents in terms of withholding information on which they have decided to deprive residents of, of services without any type of response to our repeated requests for that information. And I think that this would be something that would be important to use whatever advantages we have as a non-public city to be able to make an exception, that it's not just, they can just come in as they will, take whatever data, and then use the data against our residents without any repercussions, and, and without any requirement to divulge the information they gained.
I mean, I, I can look into it, I don't, I don't have that answer.
This occurred to me, so I would have thought of it earlier and given you a heads up, but sometimes you get these brainstorms as you're thinking about this going, hmm, yeah.
I think it's a great idea, B, to do that. I would just question, you said that they weren't a franchise utility? They are a franchise utility.
Well, no, 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 we have a franchise agreement.
But they are our franchise utilities, so they operate under that.
They have a monopoly, they're the utility of services, our areas, so.
Has to provide service.
They, they're required to provide service, but then they don't provide that service.
But I'm just saying, and I would love to have the data, because now we're having, you know, the association is having to pay.
I know.
To get the same data, so, that's good.
To prove the, the conclusions they're reaching from whatever data they are getting, without our ability to see what they have, but we're sharing what, what the association paid for with their, on their done. So I guess he has direction to do that, then?
Sure.
Okay.
We can at least light dive in and don't go too deep until we know what kind of spend we're gonna do.
Yeah, they have people that deal with utility companies all the time, but they probably haven't dealt with too many cities that have the unique situation we have with our private roads and so forth, so.
Any other questions? See, now open up public comment. Fred?
I have a question about this buyout program, this potential buyout program. Is this for just land movement, or just wildfire, or is it for both? Is that what, what are they looking at there on this buyout proposal?
So we're still, we're still building the program? We are meeting with Robin, the.
Assistant Director of Cal OES.
And she's coming to City Hall next month. And this buyout program is related to land movement for the city of Rolling Hills.
Okay.
We don't have all the specifics, that's kinda what we're building with, with, with the team.
No, but I'm just saying, it's designated towards land movement rather than wildfire risk.
That's correct.
I understand B has retired, or is about to retire?
I did.
You did, congratulations.
Air complete.
Now you can spend all your time on city affairs.
Haven't been living like a retarded person, I'll tell you that much, you know.
So, I, I hate to say this, okay. Now that Jeff and B have nothing else to do, since they've taken care of all of our personnel issues, they're now the ad hoc fire folk, right? When are we going to get your proposals for reducing the fire risk in the city? We know what the association's doing, at least those that, that attend association board meetings know what they're doing. So my question for B, who's now has all this free time, and Jeff, who apparently has.
Nothing to do.
When, when are we gonna hear your proposals as the ad hoc fire committee concerning reducing the mitigation, or mitigating the risk here in Rolling Hills? That's my other question, thank you.
Judith?
Judith, email, Eastfield Road. Can you clarify, you said something about the sirens, so is it the three, is it still the same three locations that they're taking to the association? Is that what the next step is?
The, the three locations that were proposed at the last city council meeting when HQE was here, those are the proposed locations that will be reviewed by the RHCA. The city council has not yet approved moving forward with that right now, but.
Wait, their, their council or this council?
We have not approved anything. We, before we got too far, we said, let's go talk to them first and see which ones they're okay with.
So they'll decide whether those locations are okay or not?
They're gonna decide if it's, if they're okay with it, and then it's gonna come back to us, and then we'll decide if we're okay.
So when is it going to the association, what were the dates?
I don't have a definitive, definitive date, we're meeting tomorrow to discuss that, but it'll either be June 5th or June 19th.
June 5th or 19th, okay. And then, when you were talking, excuse me if I'm out of line, but is there any updates amongst with fire protection and stuff, with the generators?
This generator?
Part of it, do we have a generator here?
No, we're getting, we're getting one.
So what's the status on, is what I'm asking?
Well, it's only, we're only like five years into it, so I'm not sure. How about this, we'll find out, and someone's gonna, someone will email you, or, because we have a.
Well, does, is it something that has to come back to city council again in the future, or you're getting a generator?
It's going.
It's going.
It just takes forever, because it's, the part of the building's not in our city.
Right, okay, that's, okay. And then I heard, I heard the building wasn't big enough for the generator.
There's a lot of problems.
Okay, so basically, if there was a fire tomorrow, we have no backup?
Zero.
Zipper roony.
We don't, and that's how it is.
We have mutual aid. And we can operate in, in emergency operations center outside of this building. We have the accessibility to do so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? See, now we're gonna close the public comment. And make a motion to receive a file, somebody?
Yes, I do. Second.
Fall in favor? Tip, next is closed, thank you guys.
Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, we totally did.
No, we wondered what